...in 2010. This time I'll call the meeting to order and ask for any public comments on any items not currently listed on the agenda. And seeing none, we'll move on to our first hearing. This is a continuation of AN 09-02. This is an annexation request. At this time, I will ask the Planning Commission members if there's any additional conflict of interest or bias that you'd like to state at this time.
I have ex parte contact in that I'm the Secretary of the Park Place Neighborhood Association, and the Park Place Neighborhood Association has submitted Exhibit 10, I believe.
Okay. Any others? I'll ask then if there's anyone in the audience who would like to ask Commissioner Stein anything about that, his position with the Park Place Neighborhood Association? All right. Seeing none, then we will move forward. And you feel you're capable of rendering a decision on this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right, then we'll move on now and go to staff. And that's you, Pete.
Thank you, Chair Powell and Commissioners. Good evening. Thank you for opening up the public hearing. Tonight, we're going to go over some of the outstanding issues that the Planning Commission had concerns about from the last hearing to review this 53-acre annexation in the Park Place Concept Plan area. Some of the items that I've outlined in your memorandum, which I've attached in your packet, have to do with the following issues. We are looking at the questions that the Park Place Neighborhood Association had with respect to the annexation, some of the concerns with respect to compliance with the transportation planning rule. This is the Oregon Administrative Rule that requires that you show compliance with the state rule for developments over a 20-year planning period and that the transportation system be adequate to handle any additional development proposed by a rezoning or comprehensive plan amendment with that rule. So we have attached an email from John Rapplinger, which briefly explains what the traffic impact analysis was required to show as part of the findings for the annexation and regarding the adequacy of that transportation analysis letter. And John is also fairly familiar with some of the requirements of the transportation planning rule and can talk about that in more detail tonight. With respect to concerns of the Park Place Neighborhood Association with regard to flooding and storm concerns on Redland Road and Abernathy Creek, we reviewed the 500-year and 1996 flood inundation layers on the city's floodplain maps. And those maps indicate that Redland Road does flood as far up as the Holly Lane Bridge during a 100-year flood event. And the 1996 flood event was a 100-year flood event. And that actually was shown to go up to Holly Lane and probably a little bit beyond. The outline of those two layers, i.e., the 1996 flood inundation layer and the 100-year floodplain layer in your packet, the maps indicate that while access to 213 was from Holcomb Boulevard was cut off during the 1996 flood, access to 213 and Clackamas River Drive was maintained. And the other question was whether the river's development was taken into account during preparation of the transportation impact analysis. Annexation, in this case, is separated from rezoning, so the applicant was not required to provide that level of detailed traffic analysis since no rezoning or development is proposed. The applicant's traffic engineer looked at in-process developments, that's developments that have either been approved or are underway, and the river's project was not part of that analysis. As far as the methodology that is used for traffic impact analyses, it is an accepted methodology used by transportation engineers, is based on trip generation by approved land use and actual traffic counts, which are used on to provide the most reliable information based on the traffic engineer's methodologies accepted by the city. Staff met with the adjacent neighbor, the townsend, to answer some of their questions about drainage, flooding, water runoff, wildlife habitat, and geotechnical concerns that they had adjacent to their property. We don't know if they are in support or against the annexation proposal, but we did provide them with all the information that they need. Part of the transfer jurisdiction of Holcomb Boulevard from the county to the city is controlled by our Urban Growth Management Agreement, and safety improvements for the applicant's frontage are reviewed at the time of development. So that would include curb, gutter, and sidewalk and any required public improvements into the site as well. When the Park Place Concept Plan was approved and adopted, approximately half of the area was designated as sensitive habitat or geologic overlay zone, and subsequently will fall under the overlay zones and development codes that are required for development in that area at the time of a development proposal. Part of that is the Natural Resource Overlay District, which is designed to protect habitat and water quality. And the other overlay zone that will be applicable in this area is the steep slope and geologic hazard overlay zone, which not only regulates slopes in excess of 25%, but also the city engineer can require review of any other underlying subsurface condition which may present a hazard to development under that overlay zone. And there are code revisions in place to Chapter 17.44 of the municipal code to implement that, those concerns. With respect to system development charges, one of the questions was how are new system development charges going to be applied? And what is the process for developing a proportional share analysis, if any, to address Oregon Department of Transportation's concerns with development of the annexation area? So what we did was we attached a couple of, three exhibits. The transportation system development charge updates were adopted by the City Commission in April 1st of 2009, which is Exhibit 6. Those TSDC increases are based on updated transportation system plan capital improvements, which are roadway and bicycle pedestrian improvements that were listed in the Park Place and Beaver Creek Road concept plans. The methodology, analysis, and new amounts are documented in the attached March 2009 report prepared by FCS Group, which is Exhibit 4 of your packet. The new transportation system development charge is applied at the time that a developer or builder applies for a building permit. And there's a methodology, a decision tree, that shows you how that TSDC is applied. That's Exhibits 5. According to our transportation consultant, while there's no specific formula, it's generally recognized as a basis for proportional share analyses. We are working with ODOT to develop an appropriate methodology. ODOT is the agency whose facility, Highway 213 and the 205 interchange, would be affected by regional growth, of which the future development of the annexation area is a part. And we have developed applicable proportional share for the 213-205 corridor for developments that have been approved in the past, fairly recently with the Cove and also with the red soils development, the county campus here in the Hilltop area. That methodology may be applicable to the 213 corridor. However, since those methodologies have been applied, the city has received stimulus funding to do design work and improvements for a significant part of the 205-213 interchange. So due to the planned improvements associated with that development, with the new SDC schedule, we would need to determine to what extent proportional share analysis contributions by the developer are applicable in this area. Since the SDCs in the city's SDC program cover 30% of state facility improvements, and the reason that it's 30% is to ensure that we have an adequate local match. There's no specified minimum for a local match funded by federal dollars for some of these improvements, but the city chose that figure in the SDC calculations. Briefly want to go over this methodology, but so you understand a little bit more. System development charges may not be used to correct existing deficiencies. They're intended to offset the impacts of new development and growth. So if SDCs cover needed improvements specified in the 213 and 205 jug handle improvements that are under design right now, then those would not be included in the proportional share analysis required of the applicant. With respect to the proposed improvements in the 205 and 213 interchange, which is Exhibit 3 of your packet, the Public Works Department has prepared an overview of those improvements. And we spoke with Nancy Crosshour last week to get an idea of some of the costs associated with that development. It's a three-stage or three-unit, sorry, a three-phase development. First phase involves the jug handle itself, which is a connection between Washington Street and Clackamas River Drive under 213. The estimated cost for the entire improvement, all three phases, is $33 million. Project is at 90% design. $22 million of that project is funded currently, and the additional $6 to $8 million required for Unit 2, which involves the Redland Road 213 section, and the addition of the third northbound and southbound travel lanes on 213 has not yet funded, but it has been mostly designed. The estimated timeline for that work is early to mid-2011 to begin, going out to bid fairly shortly. With respect to the concerns of Clackamas River Water, we met with Clackamas River Water to discuss their concerns about the Holcomb Outlook Park Place Water Agreement. And they have attached red lines that we have mutually agreed to in the staff report, which are Exhibit 7, basically detailing which tax lots would remain in Clackamas River Water District, which tax lots would be, remain on city water because there are tax lots below 400 feet elevation that are served by the city, and which tax lots would be withdrawn from Clackamas River and served by the city in the future. The final details of transfer from Clackamas River Water District for one of the tax lots to the city would be worked out at the time of rezoning. But the specific concerns of CRW with respect to adequately citing the HOP agreement have been outlined in those red lines, and we're all in agreement about those changes. Since the staff report went online, we've also received several new exhibits, which I will go over. Exhibit 7 of your packet is the Clackamas River Water revisions. Received comments from Mike Mueller, who's a resident of Livsey Road area, in support of the annexation. There's a letter there in your packet about that. Exhibit 9 of your packet is from Paul Edgar of Knema with respect to infrastructure and transportation concerns. And Exhibit 10 of your packet is from the Park Place Neighborhood Association with respect to the annexation. And some of their concerns are the suitability of land use, specifically two areas within the area north and south of Livsey Lane that are identified as soil formation, which is not called out as unsuitable for building in the Park Place Concept Plan. However, portions of those two areas were discussed during the Planning Commission hearings and City Commission hearings during adoption of the Park Place Concept Plan. At that time, we responded to those concerns, stating that since portions of those areas fell within the steep slope overlay zone, that areas 200 feet from the toe or toe of those slopes and adjacent to those slopes could be reviewed under the requirements of the geologic hazard overlay zone as well. We've incorporated revisions to the geologic hazard code to require additional review on areas that may be prone to subsurface slides, not just which are over 25% slope, should they be necessary. We pointed out at that time that the appropriate time for that kind of analysis was at the time a site-specific development plan is proposed. Additionally, a request to review what alternatives the city has to allow a limited, a lower density of housing within the Park Place Concept Plan. When the buildable lands analysis was done, between 30 and 45% of the area in Park Place was deemed to be buildable. And then the housing units and density in the Park Place Concept Plan, which led to the comprehensive plan designations that are adopted now, are based on that analysis. Should development reviews show that a specific area cannot support additional density under 1744 of the overlay zone, then that would be the appropriate time to look at reducing density on those. But for the purposes of the annexation, we don't see that there's a conflict with the concept plan. And finally, the Park Place Neighborhood Association has expressed a concern with the capacity of the 213-205 interchange, particularly the approach to the 213 corridor from the Redland Road interchange in their letter. And I won't go into much more detail on those letters, but I'd be happy to try to respond to those as we move forward. So just to summarize what is being proposed, based on the last hearing, the applicant is not proposing any development at this time. They're not proposing a rezoning. They're proposing to annex in eight tax lots with five existing homes. Subsequent rezoning proposal, we need to show compliance with the transportation planning rule, so there's some additional analysis that needs to be done by the applicant to show compliance with that rule. And that would also shed light on what additional proportional share analysis needs to be done to justify development in this area. And if you have any questions about the system development charge methodology, we'll try to answer those as best we can. John Rapplinger is here tonight if you have any detailed transportation planning questions.
Very good, Pete. Any questions?
I have two questions.
Commissioner Stein?
Two questions regarding the system development charges. The Exhibit 4 document that we have has a list of projects, capital projects, capital improvements, I think that were the basis for coming up with the number in the report. And I'm wondering, is that list a priority ordered list, or is it just a comprehensive list of projects that were available at the time?
Which list are we referring to?
It's Appendix, it's Table 4 on page 42.
That is, it's not a prioritized list, no.
It's not.
It is to come up with, that was used to tally the total of fees that could be, that could be going to a system development charge. So we identified the project, identified which, what percentage of that project cost could be dedicated to new capacity? And then that's how it came up with the number on the side that would then go into the total for the SDC that would be charged.
And from the inspection that I took, it looked to me like the projects that were identified in the Park Place Concept Plan are included in this, in this list.
Correct. Every, we did something unique with the system development charges this time. Not, the unique part is not include, we included Beaver Creek Concept Plan, Park Place Concept Plan. All those projects are identified through that concept planning project have been included in the new SDC fees. We also, in order to make it more lucrative, attractive, and a better chance of receiving federal funding for major projects in the state highway system, we're actually charging an SDC percentage to try and create a local match at some future time to be able to get federal funding for that corridor to try and assist with major projects on that corridor. A lot of that capacity on 213 doesn't start or stop in Oregon City. You're serving a greater region, which is what state highways do. But since it's in our city, we need to, we need to address some of that. So that's where we now are charging, and we came up with between 30 and 40% would be an appropriate local match to try and, try and gain some additional federal funding.
I remember when I was new to this commission, annexation issues kind of turned on the fact that the system development charges had not been updated in such a long time. And now they are updated.
Correct.
And it looks like the new charges would take effect in February of 2011?
Correct. They're on a prorated basis for some existing development. There was a request when these SDCs went in, because it was such a big jump from our previous SDC fee for transportation to the new SDC fee, that they, some developments, you know, that had been in progress through the planning process and are getting through or had been through the land use process, didn't factor in, you know, the large increase. So it is on a prorated basis. But yes, building permits as of February of 2011 would be at that full, full price.
And I think 2007, we approved the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I'm wondering, were the development charges for Parks and Recreation updated at that point? Or are the Parks and Recreation system development charges still antiquated?
See if I can try and find something for you pretty quick. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Those were the questions I had.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
Yeah, I do. So regarding the SDCs and that list as well, are those, all, all projects on that list have, are going to be within the realm of opportunity to have federal funds applied and thus even need a percentage local match?
The way I understand this would work is if, if there's federal funding for a project, then, I don't want to say this.
Part of the application process for that funding, it helps if you have a local match.
Yeah. How much it helps needs to be figured out.
Well, I get, I get that. But so I guess first and foremost, my first question is, so all of these, we anticipate looking at opportunities for federal funding, hope to get federal funding. Correct.
It's a state highway facility. It's not responsible to local jurisdiction to bring it completely up to.
To my next question, and the 30% applied to each project, it would seem to me, because usually when you look at the local and federal match, the local part is the, is a mix of the state, city, and/or any other funds locally, if I understand that correctly. And I would think it would behoove us to go, maybe if not project by project, but not to lay a blanket number and to work with, with the state and other local entities before, for us to come up with by project, that local match number. Now for us to just throw out 30% because now ODOT knows kind of where they need to come, you know, do you see what I'm getting at? And, or is that too cumbersome to do so in a list like that?
I think it's very difficult when it comes to trying to guess when you're going to get federal funding. You know, we just received $22 million. How long it's going to take us, or when the funds are going to become available? Again, when this is going to become a priority? I think it's very, very difficult to estimate. So the prudent move that Ms. Crosshour made was to start collecting now, at least start building a pot, and then you can discuss what our actual share is when those funds do become available and we have an opportunity to apply for them.
So this, these, they aren't locked in at 30%. We can still play with them even though we collected them at that level? Or is that, do we have to apply 30, that 30% to that project?
The SDCs can only be applied to projects that address capacity of new development. So as much as an improvement adds capacity, then those funds could be spent on that. You know, the SDC pool, and you, you use the money available in those SDC fees to tackle projects as they come in. It's not like it goes into a specific line item for a specific project.
It goes into the pot.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Pete. At this time, we'll have the applicant up.
Hi. Excuse me. Kirsten Van Lu, American Design. In all honesty, staff had a burden to answer a bunch of questions that you guys asked of them, and they did that to the best of their ability. They resolved the issues with Clackamas River Water, which I think was the primary reason for our continuance. And we did receive our letter from Park Place Neighborhood, which was the other request for continuance. Staff has done a pretty good job of addressing Park Place Neighborhood's concerns. And again, the majority of their concerns relate back to decisions that were made as part of the Park Place Concept Plan. My, my take on this letter is that, is that some of the decisions that were made as part of the Park Place Concept Plan and that comprehensive plan map amendment may have not been the decisions that were supported by the majority of Park Place Neighborhood Association. That work's been done, that comprehensive plan amendment's been done, the mapping's been done. Every single issue that was identified as an area of concern in the neighborhood plan was addressed by staff, is addressed by documents that you already have adopted. The last issue that, that they spent some time on in their letter, and I would have to agree with, is there are a lot of capital expenditures that are necessary to fix 213. And I think your community development director has addressed, probably in more detail than we all want to know, about how those are going to be funded. So here tonight, in conclusion, frankly, from my, from my perspective, my client's perspective, the density analysis for any specific subsection of this annexation area will be addressed at the time of development review. We have to do a very detailed topo analysis, a very detailed site analysis, very detailed soils analysis, drainage analysis. All those specific analyses will be addressed, and the specific density on every individual chunk of land will be addressed accordingly after we go through a zone change process, which we still have in front of us. This annexation and asking for you to forward this to the City Commission for approval is just the first step. It's the first step in implementing the work that you've done on the Park Place Concept Plan. And I said that to you two weeks ago, and I don't need to really reiterate that. We need to move forward with the annexation because if we don't move forward with this annexation, all the work that has been done in the past and all the time and energy is for naught. It will become more and more and more difficult to implement it, and it potentially become less and less timely as we move forward if we don't act to the, to the best of our ability now. ability now. We need to prepare for housing, we need to implement a plan that's already been adopted, we need to begin the process for construction, constructing all of the necessary infrastructure. As staff told you tonight, the SDC fees that are paid are paid at the time of building permit. So that pot can't be built until we can start doing subdivision design that allows our developers to pull building permits, because that's when the money goes into a pot. Looks like a lot of money, but that money doesn't flow into any pot or any city coffer, and it's not available for any matches until we get beyond this first step. Do you have any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Are you going to take, are you going to take opposition testimony, and then you're going to be looking for one more rebuttal or one final closing?
We will, if you'd like a rebuttal, yes. We will be.
It will be short and sweet, I promise.
Okay. Thank you. All right. This time, we'll open this up for the public comment. And Tony, you're the holder of the cards. While we're waiting, those of you who do come up to speak, please introduce yourself and your, your name and city of residence, and you will have three minutes, and the clock is right up here, you can watch that, and at that point, we'll move forward. If you are speaking for a park, for a neighborhood association, you will have, be granted additional time. Mr. Ziegler?
Hi, my name is Kent Ziegler, and I live in Clackamas County here in Oregon. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak in front of the Planning Commission again tonight, and again, I commend staff for getting all the, or the questions answered that the Clackamas River Water District had. Obviously, I agree with our planning team that the ultimate fix on I-205, Highway 213, since it does serve such a large region, goes way beyond the scope of the homes that we propose to do in the Park Place area. We've met with ODOT, we look forward to continuing our discussions with ODOT, as well as any of the other stakeholders in the Park Place area, to find a proportionality solution where we go ahead and submit our fair share as to what our contribution would be in the impact on those road systems. The main reason why I would like to talk with you tonight, if you remember last time when we discussed the, one of the reasons why the Park Place annexation makes so much sense was the health and safety issues. And I don't mean to beat a dead horse here by any means, Mr. Thomas, the one who had the heart attack last year is here in the audience, and I'll hopefully he'll have a chance to go ahead and comment on that. But one of the other things that just came to our attention is this afternoon, and unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but my brother and, I believe, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Tolstrop were able to attend the meeting, is, was brought to our attention by the City of Oregon City Public Works Department that we have a failing water system in the area. So I'd like to submit into the record a letter dated January twenty-seventh from the Public Works Department of the City of Oregon City, which discusses the problems we have in, in the area of our annexation. It's, it's kind of interesting, it includes all the tax lots you see up in front of you. Basically, the summary of the document that's been submitted is there's a pump station that's located down at the bottom of Lot Tax Lot 100, where 180 and 100 comes together. If you see where Livesey Road extends to the dotted line, that's a pump station that basically serves the homes that go up Frank Road, and it's failing. The City of Oregon City acknowledges that it's failing. In this document that they've submitted to us, they would like to spend taxpayer money of $170,000 to go ahead and put in a temporary repair to that water line because the pump station's failing. Obviously, what we'd prefer to do is rather than put a Band-Aid on the problem, is try to work together to save the taxpayers that $170,000. Since they want to extend it right through our top lot there, Tax Lot 180, that's where we began, we're saying, well, why don't we just analyze this with our team and figure out where a permanent water line should go that we can help fund as part of this whole process and save the taxpayers that $170,000. So, and again, that, this is why this area needs to be analyzed even further. Not only do we have the health issue of the water line or the water system failing, but we also, as I mentioned last time, we were together, if there was ever a fire on Livesey Road during the time of the flooding on Redland, as there has been, we risked the loss of life and the loss of property. And I don't know who's responsible for that. So, but we have a solution to it, and we're all here ready to move forward to provide that solution. So I just ask that the Planning Commission recognize when there is private individuals willing to step up and provide those solutions in this difficult economy, it would seem like that would make appropriate logical sense to allow those individuals to go forward. So I request that you approve our annexation, application. Again, we're not tonight asking for any development approvals. We know we're going to be coming in front of the Planning Commission again when we ask for zoning, and we'll be coming in front of you again when we ask for our phasing approvals. But this journey has been going on now for eight years that I've been personally involved with, and, you know, I believe in the P's, patience and perseverance, and I will be here again, as I shared, I'm from this area. This is where I want to, I want to see this happen. But it goes beyond just my own personal agenda, it goes now beyond to what health and safety is all about. And I think that, in the back of our minds, that's something that we all have to be aware of. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Ziegler? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'm George Thomas, I live on Livesey Road here in Oregon City. I would like to, TD, annexation, go in for several reasons. I can't say everything because we'd be here a long time, but, number one, there's, I've been flooded in for seven to eight days at a time, couldn't get out, I've been flooded out the same length of time, and returned home to find a home that had been destroyed by fire because a fire truck couldn't get there to save the home. Also, there's a lot of older people that live on Livesey Road, such as I, that has a lot of medical problems. I didn't have any intel this last year, but my wife is totally disabled and housebound, and she's diabetic, and I can't get out to get supplies when the water is high. And I'd like to see a roadway go in so we could get out of there for emergency stuff. In 2009, in January, I had a heart attack, and we had a flood at that time. Luckily, it only lasted for two days. If I'd had the heart attack on the first night, I couldn't have got out. The second night, I had it at eleven forty-five, the water was down to about three foot, and my daughter drove through that to get me to the hospital, and that's why I'm here today. I would like to see a way out of there, and I believe if any one of you lived on that road, I, I think you would like a way out to protect your family, you know. If anyone did. Okay, no, no. I just hope that you'll see it in your heart, for the, not just me, but there's a lot of other people on that road that has a problem. Durwood Thomas has had a open-heart surgery even, and he could flood or anything at any time, couldn't get out, you know. So I'd like to see a roadway put in if all possible. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Guile?
And I'd just like to enter into the record, the exhibits submitted by Pete Walter will be Exhibit 7, 8, 9, and 10, they include the letter from Clackamas River Water, letter from Mr. Mueller, email from Mr. Edgar and the Park Place Neighborhood Association letter. Exhibit 11 will be a letter submitted tonight by Ms. Kazinski dated February eighth, 2010, and Exhibit 12 will be the Oregon City Public Works Letter dated January twenty-seventh, 2010, that Mr. Ziegler entered into the record.
Thank you. And Mr. Guile, you representing the Neighborhood Association tonight?
Yes. Park Place. I didn't see Nancy here this evening, so. My name's Tom Guile, Vice Chair of the Park Place Neighborhood Association, live in northern Oregon City. I wanted to address a couple of things that Peter hadn't mentioned in this letter, mainly because Nancy put a lot of work and effort into it, and it was kind of briefly summarized. I don't intend to read it all, but there's a few things we want to point out. But before I do that, this issue keeps coming up, and I wanted to address it, that with all due respect to Mr. Thomas, we keep hearing about the Redland Road problem, and we talked about this in our neighborhood after Kent and Ron were nice enough to come to our neighborhood, and I'll put that up back up, to address this, and after they left, a lot of us were talking about the fact that, I think it was Kirsten last week who said, that's for another subject, another time, but if there's going to be any development in this area, you think it would be critical to improve Redland Road in that area, because this would mean, if, as Mr. Thomas pointed out, that that was the only way out, it would mean that any traffic coming in from Redland further out, all the way out, if they couldn't get through that Redland Road area, that means they're all going to be coming up that road, up to Holcomb to come back down, to avoid that area. And if there's going to be a lot more homes and a lot more development, it seems critical that that Redland Road piece for any new future development should be improved or raised a little bit to avoid those flood waters, or else we're going to have all that traffic, even those emergency vehicles are going to have to go all the way up Holcomb Boulevard to come all the way back down into Livesey. So if we're talking about flooding, that section itself needs to be addressed as part of this development, not as Kirsten said at a later date, because we're going to have a lot of traffic avoiding that area, and now they have a new path up through Park Place and up through Holcomb. The one points that, are some of the points that Nancy had pointed out were on traffic, and I'll read a few of her items here. Construction traffic will further burden travelers on 213 with the Jug Handle Project and during the planned two-year closure of the Highway 43 Bridge. We expect the cove construction to cause delays on the only alternate route on Highway 99. Another point, and a paragraph in the back, each time a subdivision has been proposed and various traffic studies have been executed, it has been shown that each project looked at individually has had little enough impact on overall traffic levels in the neighborhood that approval has been routine. The real impact, however, has been felt by anyone sitting in a stationary line of cars stretching up the hill, southward on 213, the traffic signal at Redland Road at 7:30 a.m. any given weekday morning, or by frustrated drivers trying to access 213 from Redland Road and sitting through multiple signal changes. Many of these intersections are at a level of service, D or F, at the PMP at present, and will certainly become considerably worse as the above-mentioned areas are developed over the next few years. She continues. The Park Place Concept Plan identifies eighty-plus million in capital expenditures required to address transportation infrastructure needed to support additional development. Previous experience shows the city's process does not adequately address the likelihood of fund availability and the realities of future road intersection improvements. It took an enormous effort from both the PPNA and the city for more than five years to install one segment of sidewalk on one side of Holcomb Boulevard. And she continues on about some of the sidewalk, but near the end of this, it says, unfortunately, the principal focus of the concept plan was on the intrasite transportation issues. The extension of Swan to provide the north-south connector makes sense to alleviate traffic on Holly accessing the hilltop area. However, most traffic at peak times is coming in and out of the area from I-205, and this route will do little to mitigate the crunch at that afforded intersection. The neighborhood also feels that the reality of this connector being built is slim due to complicated topography and therefore the steep cost involved. And she finishes by saying this, and the only reason I'm reading this tonight is, the commissioners have seen this, but the public watching has not seen this document as well as those here. She finalizes by saying, unless and until serious and committed discussions are underway for concrete solutions to the overwhelming existing traffic problems faced by the Park Place Neighborhood, we do not feel that we can support annexations intended for the intensive development called for in the concept plan. It appears that neither the money nor the commitment to these solutions is currently present in either the local, county, or state government, and we feel that metro and bringing these areas into the UGB in the first place has put unrealistic and unbearable pressure on both the transportation infrastructure and natural resources in our neighborhood. Again, that's from the Park Place Neighborhood Association, Nancy, as well as the rest of the committee. The, I know that Kirsten had mentioned all the work that's been done for naught, would be for naught if this wasn't approved, all the planning, the mapping has been done, but it wasn't necessarily to the satisfaction of all the people who lived in Park Place Neighborhood. They still had a lot of questions, and while it was approved, we saw what happened in the last election with citizens who were nervous about annexations and what it means to them, so that's why this was presented to you. That's all. Thank you very much.
Ms. Kazinski?
Dean Kazinski, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. At the Planning Commission meeting of January twenty-fifth of this year, both the city as well as the consultant for the developers stated, we are asking for approval only to annex the fifty-three acres at this time, we are not seeking approval to develop. Then, why in a letter dated January twenty-fifth of this year, sent to Oregon City Planning Commission from Planning and Land Design LLC in Hillsboro, Oregon, why did Paragraph One, Sentence Two state, if the Planning Commission does not agree, then the applicant is requesting R5 zoning for the first phase, which contains 6.5 acres, as shown on the attached site plan, to allow construction in summer of 2010? Your citizens and taxpayers have the right to know the truth if you do plan to begin development in 2010, or whether you have the monies to provide adequate infrastructure to this region. At the January meeting, I asked the commission to look at the cumulative traffic impacts to this region, including the shopping center, but then the city stated, we should not count in the proposed shopping center because it's not been formally approved. Don't ask me, and don't ask your citizens to have tunnel vision. Your people deserve to see the entire impact of both residential and commercial development being proposed for this region. The city's transportation plan cannot meet ODOT requirements. The city has no good access to the hospital. Holcomb Road has no access down there one and only hill. The Swan Road extension is an unbuildable nightmare. A regional transportation plan has not been developed. Is anyone looking at the two latest landslides off of Holcomb? The slides on Holly were fourteen percent slow and not even covered by your new regulations. As I stated before, proposed development by the city could bring another 127,000 ADTs per day into the Redland Road corridor. Before the city proposes any development for this region, a master regional transportation plan must be developed, and more importantly, a financial plan must be put into place to ensure that funding is available. A regional plan for transportation will cost into the billions of dollars, and at this time in our nation, this amount of money is simply not available. And I want to remind you that the Holly Lane Bridge is going to be closed for one month in the summer of 2010. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony?
So I would just like to respond that there's a very big misperception that's put out there that we are pushing development. These are, one, these are folks who want to be part of this city, who are property owners who bring these developments to the city. The city does not actively look for annexations or look for development. We process applications per the Oregon City Municipal Code. The, we did not say, let's ignore development, potential development of the landfill for whatever use may go in there. There is no application, there's no land use approved on there. If the app- If the applicant comes in and requests, and the annexation is successful, and the applicant requests a zone change, which they will need to do in order to develop in Oregon City, they need to comply with the TPR. It's a very complicated document, but I'll try to explain some of the points here. They need to look at a 20-year planning horizon, and they need to account for all of the trips of all the properties inside the Oregon City urban growth boundary that are developed or vacant. That means, for example, on the landfill site, which has a mixed-use downtown zoning, on the 20-year analysis, we have to assume it's built, and those trips will be accounted for. It serves no purpose to review it in terms of a eight-lot county zoned annexation. Those trips are not ignored. The landfill may not develop in 20 years, but those trips will be counted in any TPR transportation analysis. Every property inside the UGB will be accounted for those trips. So it's disingenuous to say we're ignoring it. So I think it's important to realize that a whole lot of detail goes into these TPR analysis. And the incremental transportation impacts that we've seen over the years is specifically because we annex in properties at one and two acres. And at one and two acres, the impact of those transportation, to the transportation system, are very, very minimal. It's almost, it almost gets lost in the number of trips. The larger developments that you'd get, as you would see in this one, if this was annexed on a 50-acre, which is still relatively small, but at least that would start to generate some trips where you would see those impacts and you could start to address them. Now, I don't deny that there's incremental impacts to the transportation system, not only by some of the smaller zone changes that we do in the city, and we don't do very many of them. But if you look over 20 years and you start to account for all the trips that originate outside of the city limits, that's where your capacity is being used up. And that's why you see we can only get 40% on some of those SDC charges, because it's not Oregon City trips. We're addressing, so we're trying to balance many things. And being on the fringe of the region with an extensive main state highway facility that serves a greater part of Clackamas County, that's one of the hardships we need to deal with. And I think the local jurisdiction has started to address this. We are charging an SDC fee for a state facility. We have no jurisdiction over it, yet we're trying to come up with remedies to try and address the lack of money that's available for transportation projects. So I think it's important to remember that this is being, we are trying to address this. We're not ignoring it. We're not trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes. The fact of the matter is, they need to come in and do a zone change. And if you don't think ODOT's not going to comment on that, the local jurisdiction, we're all going to comment on it and we're all going to look at that, that transportation rule. And if they can't meet it, it doesn't go forward. The zone change is not done by staff, it's a public hearing that goes to Planning Commission that makes a recommendation to the City Commission. And the applicant did send in a letter and said, you know, "If I can get this part, if this fails," well, okay, maybe. But the fact of the matter is, they still need to come in and apply. It's not something we're approving today, it's not proposed. We're dealing, let's deal with what we have in front of us. You certainly have the opportunity here to say, "Yes, we're going to annex, we're going to recommend that the City Commission consider annexing these properties with this county zoning, realizing that this is just one more step and many more that are needed in order to show compliance." Or you can say, "You know, we want to know everything upfront. We want to do the TPR analysis, we want to go through all that, we want to redesign everything, and then send it to a vote." And it may or may not happen. But that certainly, you know, you do have that ability. We've recommended an approach we think is probably appropriate based on how much work needs to go into this. And I, I'm very, I feel very comfortable telling you, you will see this again. A lot of these issues that you do have are either going, are addressed with our SDC fees that we have, will be addressed. Do landslides happen? Yes. Sometimes they happen on slopes less than 25%, which is where we regulate, and sometimes they don't. We have a, we've updated our code, you have been a part of that. We identify water resource areas, we identify steep slope areas, we take the precautions, we take away density in those areas. So some of these questions, you need to rely on the code you have in place that you've reviewed. If you don't think it's appropriate, we need to go back and look at it. But we do have one that's in place. It has been updated. So, you know, I think a lot of these questions go further than just annexation, because it's, it's hard to, it was like with the concept plan, you know? Metro started with this very big view of, "We need some, we need lands for jobs, we need lands for housing." Very, very high level. And then we do a concept plan, and we narrow it in. And we've identified costs, we've updated our CIP plans, we've updated our SDC fees. The next step is to do the next level analysis, where you're looking at topographies on two foot, where you get a better understanding of what's there. And how you want to process that, certainly you do have the ability, you know, the discretion to decide on what path we take. And we've recommended one path here, and you may or may not agree with us, but we'd be glad to try and answer any questions you have. But I just, I think a lot of work has been done that may not be understood or recognized.
Good comments, I appreciate that. Are, do we have any others?
I don't have any other.
Do I have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
It's the applicant one rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry, rebuttal. Darn it, I keep doing that, I apologize. Even after we talked about it.
In Oregon, we've developed a process of land use planning that is renowned throughout the United States, actually throughout the world. What we do is we start at 30,000 feet, and we take the 30,000-foot look, and that's what Metro does. And then we zoom down to the 10,000 look, from 10,000 feet above, above ground. And that's what we did with the Park Place Concept Plan. Now we're asking the Planning Commission to zoom down just a little bit closer. Maybe we're 5,000 feet above the ground. Instead of looking at 400 acres or 800 acres, we're looking at 50, 55 acres. And we're saying, "Please, will you find it in your professional capacities, your volunteer capacities, to determine that the look from 30,000 feet and the look from 10,000 feet were good?" And now we're looking at it from 5,000 feet, and we're saying, "We need to move forward to implement what we've done earlier to be able to put this forward to City Commission, put it forward to the voters. Remember that the voters will decide at the end of the day." And if we're successful at the 5,000-foot look, we will zoom down to the worm view, and that's where we will do our zone change analysis, our traffic analysis, our slopes analysis, and our development review design. But we can't get there without your help today. And if we, if we can't get there, we're going nowhere. We're stuck up here at 10,000 feet above sea level, 10,000 feet in the air, we can't get there. I also want to say that I appreciate our community development director's willingness to be forthright and passionate about the work that's been done, because his staff has worked very hard to get you the information you need. And I, I would have confidence in him, because I have confidence in him, even though he is younger than me. Do you have any questions?
No, I think we're all set. Thank you. Okay. Now, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we will bring it up here to the commission for discussion and decide what to do. So, who'd like to speak? Would you like to go first? Any volunteers?
What I would say is that I just want to recognize that this is a question about whether or not we recommend to the City Commission to refer this annexation to the voters. That's simply all we're doing here. We're not talking about a detailed development plan. Secondly, I participated in developing the Park Place Concept Plan. And a lot of people were involved in the development of the Park Place Concept Plan, and a lot of work went into the development of that plan. A lot of, all of the issues, in fact, all of the issues that I've heard so far regarding whether or not these properties should be, should be voted on for annexation by the people of Oregon City. Issues have been, have been discussed, written about in that plan, and problems have been addressed in that plan, solutions to problems have been addressed in that plan. And I think it's a good plan. And, and for me, I think it's time to move forward, to, to let the voters, to ask the City Commission to allow the voters to vote on whether, to annex this property or not. So that, that's where I'm sitting on this.
Lejois?
Yeah. First of all, I'd, I'd like to concur with our community development director, Mr. Conkles, understanding of, and of how this process works, and actually for educating everybody. Because what, what the Park Place Concept Plan represents is the most fundamental, it's the first, it's just your first step, it's your baby step out of the door to figure out how to plan a city. And it's pretty clear that everything that we've seen over the last eight years in approving the Park Place Concept Plan, that it's all there. I mean, all the pieces are there, they've, they've addressed all these issues. Are there more to come? Absolutely. That's, that's future steps, but there's, there's plans of, of how to develop it. So, I mean, I, I just really feel, actually very passionately about the Park Place Concept Plan, and that this little piece up at the north end is really critical for it, because it's some access for it. And I guess the other thing I'd like to say, there's been some education for the community tonight. And I think the other part of it, that's, that's, that's important is that this body here, that we're just volunteers, we're just regular community people, we're not, we're not staff, we're not consultants. And all we do is, is really hear all this stuff, and we're, we're just acting on the behalf of, of our citizens. And what we're, what I, what I see is overwhelmingly, this is a good thing for our city. So, that's my thought.
Thank you. Lejois.
So, I'd have to also agree and thank Tony for, for his comments and helping educate me as well for a number of points along the way, but, but the general public on how the land use process in Oregon is, and has Van Lu comment on this, how unique it is and how, just the fact that you have opportunity yet again at this level, we've had opportunity for input, and to use her analogy from the 50,000-foot and each level down the way. And that actually, there's a reason that the citizens of the state voted to put a process like that in place, and our region looks better because of it. And I truly believe it works, and it works when we work through this process. And that the time for the level of detail and questioning that we have start, begun to see tonight, there is going to be a place for that, but only because we have a process that we've set up like this. So, and I do appreciate and thank all the staff time, because I do know the level of staff time that goes into these things. But I also have seen the Zieglers here for eight years or more, and I do know their dedication to the community and know that this isn't a project that they intend to slap down for the cheapest and quickest way, and that they really will be here for the long haul, and I appreciate that as well. But that said, this is an annexation, it is not a zone change, and to the extent and level of detail that, that we will, I, I'm sure, and can anticipate that discussion, that's not for tonight. And I would be fully in support of the annexation as proposed.
Very good. Well, clearly, there are a lot of, there are a lot of concerns about any applicant, any, I'm sorry, any development that might go on in this, in this area. Again, that's, that's a discussion for later. As much as it'd be nice to be able to have all the information upfront, as much as it'd be nice to be able to, 10 years ago, to have zoned, or brought every piece of property we possibly could into the city, so we could have had a decent planning opportunity, it would have been nice, but we can't. So it's hard to plan that far out for any piece of property. And yes, I'd love to have the opportunity to look down the road and say, "Well, what would it look like 20 years from now, and how is that going to impact everybody in this city?" We don't have that opportunity. I find, it seems to me the better time to be reviewing all the traffic studies and all these things that we've been brought up this evening, is going to be when the development occurs, or when the development application comes in. That's when it's time to start getting down to the, the bits and bites. I think it's premature to ask the applicant for, to do any, any more work than they've already done. In my opinion, for this application, they've already gone above and beyond what they should have done, or even had to do. But they've done it because they, they thought that that's the, the right process. So I applaud them for the, what the work they've done. Remember, we're only dealing with five houses right now. And I know it long-term, and you may say I'm being naive, but that's what this application's about, and that's all we are able to, to look at and judge. Process, the Park Place Neighborhood Association, everybody who's commented, you have some very real concerns, and, and they're very well-stated, and I appreciate that. And that's something that's going to carry on into the development process if and when that happens. And that's something that we'll all look at many times over to be able to make those decisions, and to be able to make it satisfactory to everybody. You know, the traffic is, is an issue. There's many issues that we have to resolve, the least of which is traffic, I guess. The concept plan process, I thought was well-done, well-managed, I thought it was well-attended, I thought it, I was impressed with the outcome, and we listened to public testimony throughout many years to, to review all these things. So I agree with the fellow commissioners that I think it's a good process and should be followed on. I will say that out of the applicant, the exhibits that I saw today, I, I find that Mr. Edgar's memo is premature at best. I find it's difficult, if not impossible, to determine any kind of costs associated with a development like this, this early on. And quite frankly, I resent the threatening tone of his letter, and I just wanted to make that real clear, because I, I think it's inappropriate. And then last, I'll say that I think our role here is, is like Commissioner Lejois said, our role is to determine this particular application, this particular five-house annexation. And I believe that the applicant's done a good job, and, and the, the staff has done an excellent job in presenting this, and I would support this, moving this forward to the City Commission for a vote to the public. So with that, I'm open for a motion.
I'll move to, to approve the annexation 0902.
That would be for, move to the City Commission for their consideration. At the February, do we have a date, is that February 17th?
Yep.
February 17th, 2010, public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Tony?
Commissioner Lejois. Commissioner Groner.
Aye.
Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Chairperson Paul.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everybody who commented and came in to discuss this with us. We'll just take a minute, till we clear out a little bit.
Mr. Crawford, just one second.
Appropriated or not?
Which they wouldn't have before. They don't get it modified. Appreciate, we appreciate our traffic representatives here as well. Sorry you didn't get to speak. Not one. You did an excellent job. Thank you, sir. I've told you guys, no jokes up here. All right, let's move on, if we could. Let's see, I gotta get it back to the agenda here. No, it wasn't the agenda. Oh, there you go, thanks.
On, on the floor, it should bring it up.
Got it. Okay. Next would be L-0801. Commission report is right there. And this is, oh gosh, I'm sorry, I can't read that, it's too small. Six months here, a code update, thank you. So I will turn this over to you. Tony, are you the?
Yeah, I, yeah. We are requesting a continuance to February 22nd, 2010 Planning Commission hearing. If anybody'd like to speak tonight, recommend you do take that and then continue that hearing. I don't have any requests at this time to speak. We're just trying to clean it up, the code a little bit more, and there were some outstanding questions from the last hearing that we weren't able to address, and quick enough to get it back to you.
I'll ask our vast audience if you'd like to speak. I see he does not want to, so let's, let's go for a motion then on this. Motion to continue? To February 22nd, 2010.
Removed.
All right, Commissioner Groner, and we have a second. Commissioner Groner, and we have second.
Second.
And Commissioner Stein, second.
Commissioner Lejoie. Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Commissioner Groner.
Aye.
Chairperson Paul.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Next, information from Tony, I believe.
So, in the commission report that I had forwarded to you, it was kind of, it was a summary of pretty much the last seven to 10 years of planning applications that had been submitted to Oregon City. The first planning applications submitted to Oregon City, including planning review of building permits. And what that was, was when we implemented the Housing Design Standards, Chapter 1720, a couple of years ago, what that meant was, we started to take that in as a separate application. So, it skews the numbers a little bit from the previous years, because it was an application that we weren't taking in before. So, what that means is every single-family house that comes in, we now review to make sure it complies with 1720. So, the second sheet, a 79-year packet, excludes the single-family house design permits, and it gives you a more accurate review of just land use applications. So, that would be anything from appeals, annexations, through zone changes and comp plan amendments, legislative actions, and whatnot. So, you can kind of see the little roller coaster we've been on over the years. One of the interesting stats is actually on page 80, the proposed parcels in Oregon City. So, for 2009, we approved 10 new lots in Oregon City through partitioning or subdivision process. So, you can see the extent of this recession in terms of building lots, and what we are seeing is actually quite a few platted, recorded lots that exist, that, so we have quite a few, an inventory of unbuilt lots in Oregon City right now.
Why the spurts, there's two spikes there in '04 and '06 that are pretty significant. Do you, any speculation?
I think you kind of started to see, that was right after we'd implemented that R2 zoning in some of the areas of the city, and we ended up getting subdivision applications on those properties. Sequoia, south of Glen Oak Road came in, that Sequoia Centex, there was probably well over 100 there.
There was one anticipating it, and another one jumped in about a year and a half later.
Through the planning process.
Right.
Right. And then the Sequoia over by High School, on the north side, in between Glen Oak and Myers, including the condos, I think that's up near 300 units total. And then you had Caulfield, up by Two's Pond, on the, off Caulfield Road there, on the west side of 213. So, you saw significant, quick land use applications in that R2, and just at 2,000-square-foot lots, you end up with quite a few units. And that ends, that tends to be quite a bit of the housing lot, or the lots that we still tend to see not built yet. Dwelling units on page 81, we're probably going to trend right around that 100, 125 next, this year as well in 2010, just getting an estimate from what we're seeing and hearing from builders. So, probably hold right in that range for probably another year, probably see that things pick up again, getting into 2011, most likely. So, that was just kind of, the last two pages are just how we track, the spreadsheets by application type. The planning site plan, where you, that's what we refer to as the single-family house designs. That's why that number's relatively high and skews things a little bit. You can kind of see those came online in 2004 there, when the new code went into place, and we started reviewing those homes. We are currently projecting very similar for our fiscal year of 1011, as we're seeing in 910. We've received a couple pre-applications. We did receive our first one here in probably three or four months. But no housing yet, so that's definitely come to us slow. Yep. Thayer Road. Yeah, we may see Thayer Road again. You may remember, we saw that a year and a half ago or so.
I would never forget it.
Yes. Yeah.
Actually, I'm surprised by the applications. I'm actually, that number's larger than I thought it was, considerably larger than I thought it was, actually. So, I'm surprised.
And, you know, some of that is the Cove. There are several applications associated with that, the detailed development plan, the concept plan, amending that concept plan. We did have Tri-Cities in here with another master plan. You know, the Children's Center was in. So, you know, we are seeing a lot of modifications to existing buildings rather than brand-new buildings. So, trying to work within, you know, trying to add on to an existing building, trying to save some money to utilize what's there. So, and like I said, we're pretty much projecting that for foreseeable future. If we, we're kind of estimating that if we were to see a ramp-up of pre-apps kind of now, you know, getting ready for the summer building season, there may be some that do trickle in there, and maybe a couple smaller ones, but it's probably still a little bit out, which isn't a bad thing. And you probably will see, you know, we are seeing some of the transportation numbers kind of flatten out, you know, just between not working, you know, unemployment rate rising, and lack of development, those have tended to, you're not seeing the one, one-and-a-half, two-and-a-half percent increases we were seeing before. I think, going back to what the local jurisdiction's doing, I really would like to emphasize that Nancy Crushar works very closely with the state and Metro in trying to address these regional transportation issues. We do have a regional transportation plan that is adopted, and that we do work off of. We do look at the region as a whole. We do look at the Oregon Highway Plan. And these are all plans that need to get, that do get incorporated into the transportation planning rule. So, I think there's a little, there's a lot that goes on that is very, very difficult for even professionals to understand and wrap your head around, how we're going to comply with these issues. I mean, obviously, funding is an issue. You know, a state that hasn't raised the gas tax or come up with an alternative funding source for their state facilities. But I do think it's important, as we move forward, and hopefully this does become a priority, is how that cooperation between the local, and the county, and the state, and the federal government improves. You know, we are a regional center for Oregon City, with a seat for Clackamas County. And with that does come some demands on our infrastructure that other jurisdictions wouldn't absorb. We have a higher rate of properties inside the city limits that aren't taxed because of all the county facilities that we do have, which impacts our general fund and our ability to make some of these improvements. We're not oblivious to these. We're trying to tackle these every day. I also think it's important, of course, everyone wants a transportation system that functions. And, you know, the question becomes, at what price? We've already acknowledged that you're not going to have free-flowing movement 24 hours a day. I mean, the investment is, to achieve that is questionable, if it's even attainable. You could put a moratorium on growth in Oregon City. You could say, until we have concurrency, till every intersection functions flawlessly, we're not going to allow any more development to occur. Fact, but unless you've got a region-wide moratorium, any capacity, any improvements we would make would be taken up by development outside of the system, of which we have absolutely no control over. And that's where trying to work with Metro, and what adds another layer for us, is being at the edge. We are the main route for Clackamas County to reach the metropolitan area. Right or wrong, it's just the way it is. And so, we've got one more layer that we've got to try and address, because every improvement we make is not just for the benefit of Oregon City residents, it's for the greater region. And there's an equity issue there of, should the, and it's easy to say the developer should do it, but you've got to remember, these are also citizens of Oregon City who own property, who are trying to do something with it, and better their property and better Oregon City. And if we say, you've got to come up with $20 million to fix the state highway system, when 40%, 40%, 45% of those trips aren't starting or stopping in Oregon City, there is an equity issue there. And it's not pro-development or anti-development, it's just, it's a fairness issue. And it's becoming more and more difficult as these projects get more and more expensive, and the fixes get bigger and bigger. So, I'd just really like to point out that we're not oblivious to this. There's a lot of work going into it, and a lot of effort going into that.
You know, and that's why the urban growth boundary is such a great idea. It's because you're trying to pull all this in here, so it just doesn't keep going, and that infrastructure keeps going. It's to try and get a handle on it. So, for those people that don't understand, that's what this is all about, is to contain and keep it inside. So, it's, you know, that's a critical part of it.
Well, it's not like, it's happening everywhere. And we get so many unfunded mandates from the federal government and the state government, and now we get it from Metro, all thinking they're doing the right thing, but it all funnels down to us, and this little body, we've, you know, it's a difficult situation to try and manage all that, at best, to try and manage it, and to be able to participate. And then, I think part of it is education, because it's difficult for the average person out there who sees, you know, who sees the roads are all torn up, and then they see us building this little thing down on the river, and say, well, why would you not spend the money from there up here? I mean, that makes no sense. Well, they don't understand that that money was earmarked for that, and we don't have a choice. We don't have a choice to spend it somewhere else. And I don't know how you do that. I don't know how you educate, but I can't tell you how many questions I have to answer about those things. I mean, everything, everything is, you know, why are we doing that when my street has a pothole? Why are we doing this? And people just don't understand. And I don't know the best way to educate them, and maybe some roundtable someday that we can film and do. I think that might be a good thing, just to get people to watch it, and try to educate people on how this works.
I do apologize, I wasn't able to find the parks question on the SDCs. I believe it was, and we can follow up and get you an answer to this. But I know, but I know that we are collecting SDCs now for pedestrian and bike trails, which, once again, is a dedicated fund for capacity for those. We can't go spend that on potholes, just like we can't spend SDC fees on non-capacity improvements. We can't go fix the problem for the existing condition, but you, and this gets very complicated, but let's just say the intersection's already failing, okay? You've got all this new capacity that comes in, and per the TPR, you have to bring that so that it's a no increase of a worse condition. You don't necessarily have to fix it, because you're not the one that broke it, technically. You know, so that's.
Just stay in the bad condition.
Well, until the region decides on how they're going to accommodate, all the other developments already come in and broke it. So, it's a very, very complicated process, but we will go through that. And I think it is, I actually do think it is a good thing that we are, you know, have these concept plans that we've done, we've identified, we've taken steps now ahead of time, you know, before these annexations are even possibly going to be developed, of starting to collect fees to trying to accommodate some of this capacity questions that I think we've been lacking in the future. And requiring these zone changes after the fact is going to require another level of analysis that we historically didn't get, because those properties were already in the urban growth boundary. They already, they've had comp plan designations since, most of those, since 1982 was probably the last time, you know, we did anything where we drastically changed a boundary around. And so, technically, they should have already been, they should have been accounted for already when we updated our TSP back in 2001 or so. So, there's a lot of nuances to where a property's located, what work's been done already, what's already been accounted for, et cetera, et cetera. Work going into it.
Every day, I'm glad you're doing it. I'm not. Okay. Anything else?
I think that's all we have for tonight.
All right. Anything from?
What has gone on with the Operations Center?
There was, the appeal to Luba ran, not last Friday, the Friday before, there was not one submitted, as of Wednesday, when we checked, and it should have been there by then. You guys hadn't heard anything. So, I think the next step is to try and, there was a condition added concerning the basalt outcropping up on the top, and trying to maintain or preserve as much of that, or all of it, if possible. So, I know, I think we're starting to work on looking at alternatives for up there, and then trying to figure out what's the best way to bring that forward, you know, whether they kind of bring forward a larger, a larger package, and say, here's what we're proposing, or, you know, if there's no support for it, you know, there's spending more money and time on it, but, you know, really focusing on that area to see what can be accommodated, what can't, and try and get some direction from that. So, right now, just trying to understand what all the conditions require, and setting up a process to try and start working through that.
Status of Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan?
That's been remanded by Land Use Board of Appeals. They found that the Beaver Creek Concept Plan did not have enough employment lands.
I was wondering if anything.
We're waiting for Metro to work out how they're going to, how we're going to make the Gold Nine, the Metro Gold Nine Industrial Lands Map consistent with the concept plan, and how exactly Metro can go about making findings that our 121 acres of industrial land is adequate.
That was remanded to the city commission, or back to planning?
Right now, city commission.
City commission, thank you.
Isn't that something we had addressed before with Metro?
Luba found that we had worked through it with Metro, there just wasn't enough evidence in the record to explain how we got from the 360-something acres of industrial identified in the UGB expansion areas to the 121 acres. And the question we've been working out, talking with Metro about, is whether or not Metro is comfortable dealing with it now, or if they want to roll this in with the urban reserve discussion, because they're already dealing with it. And our impression is that they would prefer the latter, just because it just becomes part of a bigger thing. Well, I mean, I don't think it's, I don't, Luba didn't disagree that Metro couldn't do what it did, or that we couldn't do what we did, it was just that we didn't explain it well enough.
Okay. Because I thought I had remembered us discussing that, and that we had an agreement with Metro that there was a reduction, but it still worked. So, they wanted more evidence to that fact, apparently.
So, there just wasn't enough evidence to support, or findings to support the discrepancy between the map and the amount of acreage that actually came in for industrial use.
Anyway. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.